Thank you.
Good, I see nods there, very good. Honorable Mayor, council members, thank you very much. We're delighted to be before you this evening and quite honored to work on this partnership with the City of Kennedale. We're pretty excited about this. We think it's the result of a lot of hard work from a lot of different people and kind of looking at things in maybe a little bit of a non-traditional way of looking at things, and I'll get into that a little bit later as we speak to basically the two options that we have looked at as the possibility of connections. So Leslie, you can pull up the PowerPoint there at any given time? Thank you. As I said, we are very happy to be here, and the third individual here back is our senior engineer, Robert. And you heard from Brad or George introduced Brad earlier, so we've got good engineering staff here to kind of go over a couple of the slides and really talk about the interconnect and the, a little bit more of the detail of the locations and things of that nature. Next slide, please. Thank you. I think it's probably worthwhile for us to kind of take a step back to see how we got where we are today. And part of that, and I don't want to go any further than the inception of the O&M contract, which is a little over a year now that we started that, April 1st of 2019. And we think that's very critical because when we looked at the overall contract and then the interconnects, we didn't know a whole lot about Kennedale because there were certain things that, you know, we were looking to develop. You had certain information that Freezer Nichols and other engineers had provided to us, but we collected a lot of information in this past year. And the initial plans were based upon kind of a high-level, very cursory look at where an interconnect could be made, and quite frankly, the overriding possibility there was how close the two systems were together. So if we looked at a street and you were on one side and we were on the other, or we stopped and you started on a particular street, that was a potential connection site. Not to say that those haven't been ruled, have or have been ruled out, have not been ruled out, I should say, but that was overly simplistic. There were other things that had to be taken into account, the size of the pipes connected there, how much could we get through connections, was there enough ground in the right of way to put everything that was necessary for a connection in that particular location? So that's where the entire year was useful in us gathering a lot of data. This operation's contract implementation has certainly allowed us to have a lot better idea of the understanding of the system dynamics, particularly the hydraulics, what flows where, where the dead ends are, how the tanks operate, things of that nature. And of course, as I mentioned, you had work done in the past by Freezer Nichols, FNI, and we started with the master plan, which you had done in 2014, and it really talked about a particular way of connecting things, and we call that kind of the traditional wholesale model. And then we took that as the, if you will, the platform or the basis to build upon to look at alternatives as to how we could supply Kennedale a little bit differently than that traditional model of wholesale water sales. Next slide, please. Our objectives, and I'm sure these are in line with yours, but I want to take this a little bit further. Certainly, this entire endeavor was started with the idea of reducing the cost to Kennedale, and primarily in the operation and maintenance side of things. A major part of that is, of course, reducing the Fort Worth wholesale supply to the contract minimums until that contract runs out. But there's a whole lot of other things that flow out of that as well. We were also looking for a positive relationship built upon trust and deliverables. We both had to have trust to start into something like this because it's something that neither of us had done before, and it's a little bit outside of the realm of the norm of two municipalities. But when I say not only that trust at the time, it's that trust that hopefully will continue to build, and when I speak of deliverables, of course, there are certain things that, you know, are very obvious. For instance, if a main breaks tonight, City of Arlington's going to come to the City of Kennedale and make that repair, very obvious. But there's certain other things that are deliverables that we're working on right now, and that really involves us understanding the system, working with the city, and then saying, here are some very key performance measures that you can hold us accountable for. So that deliverable, those performance measures, are still kind of under construction, if you will. Also, we looked at system upgrades, and it's a little bit different because now we had, so to speak, the boots on the ground. We could have it from a person operating the system, their level of looking at things and look how things work together with one another, not only on the operations side, but also looking at that capital, that expenditure of those dollars, either for an interconnect or any kind of improvements to the system. Obviously, water bodily was a primary goal, getting off the wells, and that was primarily aesthetic. There's nothing at all wrong with the well water, it's just that it tends to be a little bit more mineralized and, you know, the water quality that comes from either Fort Worth or City of Arlington, both surface water supplies treated essentially the same way, typically has a little bit higher aesthetic value. And then, of course, we were looking at a long-term operation. Neither one of us wanted to get into something, although there are obviously options to back out, I don't think either one of us went into this thinking that would be the case. We looked at it as a long-term operation. Next slide, please. So when I spoke about the traditional model, that was the model that came out of that 2014 master plan that Freezer Nichols had done for the City of Kennedale, and it looked at the interconnect under the traditional wholesale model to the City of Arlington. And when I say traditional wholesale model, really what I mean is exactly what you have with Fort Worth today. It is typically a single point of connection. Infrastructure is put there to take 100% of the supply from the wholesaler into the City of Kennedale and then distribute that through your distribution system. Unfortunately, that has a higher cost because there tends to be the need for larger mains leaving from the site of the interconnection, and meter station, storage tanks, pumps, things of that nature, all have to be constructed. And we'll talk a little bit about the cost here in just a second when I turn things over to Brad, but we can compare that to this hybrid supply model, which really was this past year looking at the system and saying, a lot of what-ifs, what if we connected this, what if we did that? And we kind of threw things at the wall, saw what stuck, if it made sense, and then kind of worked with FNI. We retained them because they had great knowledge of your system, and we looked at all of those things and said, what makes the most sense here? So that hybrid model, big difference is, the traditional model separates two systems, absolutely. The hybrid model partially integrates Kennedale's and Arlington's distribution systems. And I want to point out that there's, what is done can always be undone, so I don't want you to think that there's anything here that is nefarious that couldn't be undone in the future. Kennedale decided it wanted to go on its own way, but we feel this is the most cost-effective and efficient manner to approach this particular problem. So what it does is it expands what we call our west pressure plane. Basically, what would be on the east side of Kennedale is kind of our west pressure plane, and it would take that pressure plane from Arlington and move that somewhat into Kennedale, almost cleaving the system in a north-south axis in half. It uses some of the existing infrastructure that Kennedale customers have paid for through the years and repurposes that, particularly the existing pump station near the high school, Kennedale's well site number T4. And then it provides additional wholesale supply points, one being at Kennedale site T2, as well as some other smaller connections that we can point out in just a moment. But the whole idea is looking at, again, the most cost-effective, efficient manner of supplying the city and using the best parts of both systems where the whole is much greater than the sums. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Brad and Robert, and they can talk about these particular options and where the connection points are, costs, and things of that nature.
Thank you for having us. Brad Franklin, Assistant Director of Water Utilities. The, as Craig mentioned, the two different scenarios, traditional model, of course, that was laid out by Freezer Nichols in the 2014 master plan you can see here. We've worked with Freezer Nichols as part of this report to update those costs. You can see, and really, it's really not phases for this particular one, all three of these phase one, two, and three would need to be complete to provide, be able to provide water to Kennedale in this scenario. So you can see the first one, phase one, that's simply getting water to the city limit, and as Craig mentioned, the traditional model would be, at that point, Kennedale would construct also a pump station, ground storage. So you're looking at $7.7 million based on what was already studied and presented in the existing master plan. So when we started looking at this, looking at our different options, we were trying to look at, okay, if this was our system, what would we do? You know, we're looking at this as a partnership, and so we wanted to look at all kinds of different options, what makes the most sense? Kind of almost, what's the best bang for our buck, if you want to say? So if you go to the next slide, please. So what we came up with after looking at probably 10 to 12 different locations that we could connect throughout the city, along our city limits, we targeted this particular location. This one is actually three different phases, can be done individually or all three at one time. As Craig said, phase one is simply, if you can see from the map there, you see kind of the hatched area with a red boundary on the west, a dashed red line. That would be a pressure plane expansion, so it's still the City of Kennedale water mains, but what we would do would be to, along that red boundary, we would actually valve those, valve off of several locations. We'd make actually, I think it's about six connections where we have a City of Arlington water line right next to a Kennedale water line, and so that whole area right there, which is the east, kind of an east part of Kennedale, would be directly on City of Arlington water. The biggest benefit, and this was identified in the 2014 master plan, is that is a particular hot, kind of a high area ridge there, and so there's very low pressures in that area, and I'm sure maybe some of you even see complaints from some of those subdivisions. So this would immediately increase the pressure, you know, 15, 20 PSI, depending on location for these residents in that area. So that's one huge benefit. Obviously, as far as water quality, it'd be directly on our water, so a little bit different taste to that. So as far as that phase one expansion, you're looking at about $160,000 to accomplish that, and you can see from the table there that gets about .55 MGD, still minimizing what we're taking from Fort Worth, .2, and then, of course, the remainder of 1.65 MGD would be from wells. So that's kind of the initial piece right there. Like I said, that can be done as a standalone piece. The second one is, we started looking at, okay, how can we expand this to the rest of the system? So if you look at the T4 site, which is just west of Kennedale High School, it's an existing well, ground storage, and pump station, we would convert that, no longer use the well water, and basically take Arlington water directly into that ground storage tank. It's kind of like we were talking about with traditional model here, but we would be able to reuse that tank as your entry point and then reuse the pump station to pump to your system. That's another about $160,000, but you can see in the table there that that moves the majority of the water now coming from AWU, so you get 2.2 MGD, and then the remainder will be from Fort Worth. That allows you to completely get off the wells. So just with those two alone, you're looking at a little, like, $320,000 to get off the wells completely. One of the things that we'd like to point out, though, is the phase three. We really believe that this, the phase three should be done sooner than later. What phase three, without doing phase three, the main entry point into Kennedale would be through the T4 site. If for some reason the T4 site went down, some kind of emergency, that would force us to have to go back to City of Fort Worth for the remainder of the water, since the wells would be down. That would also increase, based on their particular contract, that would increase the amount that they could pay based on their charges and how they have that, or if you have peak demands on a certain day, and so it's, it kind of penalizes Kennedale. So we think the phase three, what that does is give us another option. If the T4 site goes down, you now have another connection that we can use, a kind of a redundant connection. It allows us to keep the Fort Worth usage to the .2 MGD as we're showing, so, and that's approximately another $180,000. So a little over $500,000, all three phases can be complete. We think this is a really good setup. I mean, obviously, the cost compared to the $7.7 billion is a, is a big deal too, so, but we, like I said, we worked with Freezer Nichols, really looked hard trying to make this, I think, the best for both City of Arlington and the City of Kennedale, and believe we found that. I'll hand it back over to Craig now.
Thanks, Brent. Thanks, Leslie, as well. Now we have kind of the next steps, and I do want to point out, because it was talked about very early on in this overall process, besides the O&M, the City of Arlington has the capability to do construction work as well. I do want to point out that all the costs that you have looked at are in fact updated by Freezer Nichols, construction costs done by outside contractors, not the City of Arlington. So those numbers, whether they be $7.7 million or roughly the $600,000 or so for the hybrid option, those are contractors. If the City of Arlington were to do it, we believe we could do it less expensive. We don't have the profit and overhead issues that, I shouldn't say issues, but they're, you know, just the nature of the beast when it comes to for-profit contractors. So we think that cost could come down somewhat. Of course, with any construction, you don't know all the variables, but we are fairly confident on that, and we've actually already been out looking at a few of the sites to see if they are in fact constructible. Just to point out that traditional wholesale model, there's an awful lot of work that would have to be done with that. Certainly, it's a choice of the city which direction you go, but just kind of letting you know, that has a very long lead time with respect to getting all the work done in a traditional design bid-build kind of process. And we're already working to that last bullet there, looking to determine what, if any, TCEQ requirements may be associated with kind of the expansion of the west pressure plane and the hybrid system that we're talking about there. So we've already had those initial conversations, and we're doing some follow-up on that. We don't think that there's any particular problems. The biggest thing that TCEQ worries about is water quality. Certainly, we can speak to that, and constructibility is not a problem whatsoever. So with this, you know, we put this out there as a choice for the city. We feel that we could get started, you know, relatively soon, certainly within this late summer timeframe as we finish up with a couple of jobs here that we're undertaking here in the city if we decided to go the hybrid model route. But beyond that, I and the other gentleman here were more than willing to ask or answer any questions that you may have.
All right, so let's see if we have any questions. Chad, any questions or comments? No?
Great work. Just enjoyed the presentation, there's a lot to take in there.
Sandra?
No question or comment.
Chris?
This is probably for Lakita. Lakita, do you know how much of the O&M allowance we used out of the year one allowance? Because I'm looking at if we were to move forward, I mean, have we already spent the $250,000 for year one, or have we, do we still have some of that, or have we overspent?
George, do you?
I don't think, Chris, that we have probably spent some of that capital. My, I think there was $250,000, Craig, you can correct me, $250,000 in the first year. The intent was that the bulk of that would be used to go toward the cost of connecting the water systems. There were some other capital projects that have come along that needed to be done, some problems that Arlington found in the system, but I think the bulk of that $250,000 is still available, and the intent with the agreement was that whatever wasn't there to cover the connections, we would also be duplicating that amount of money in the second year of the contract, which we're now in. So we essentially have $500,000 just in year one and two, less whatever we spent for a few other capital projects, but just my comment is, the cost, in addition to the redundancy that this will create, the ability to use some of our own facilities and the pressure plane issues with regard to better pressure in so much of the city, makes this hybrid plan, in my opinion, a very, very attractive option that Arlington has come up with in our interest.
Well, I think just, I mean, to me, obviously, we don't have $8 million, so I think right away, the hybrid model is obviously a good idea. I appreciate Mr. Cummings and your team, and you guys have done great work, and you're correct, the primary complaint that we hear is, I turn on my water sprinkler and it squirts three feet up in the air because there's just no pressure. So, and then, as you also mentioned, we would be moving to the Arlington water, which, depending on who you are, tastes better. Certainly tastes better in Fort Worth water, maybe some of the, some of the neighborhoods prefer the well water, but I would agree with your assessment that the, the sooner we can get off of those wells and eliminate that expense and increase our pressure, the better, and I certainly appreciate Mr. Cummings and your team and all the work, because this isn't, I know this took an enormous amount of resources, and I just want to say thank you, and I certainly think the hybrid model is the one that we should consider to move forward with and start resolving some of these pressure and taste issues that we've all heard about for many years.
Linda?
I have no questions, just want to comment and say thank you very much to the City of Arlington for the presentation, appreciate it.
Josh? Josh?
I think we lost Josh.
Yeah, we just can't see him, there's some pluses to that. There he is. Josh?
No question, and I just also want to thank him for his time, it was a great presentation.
Where's Larry? Larry, input? Thank you, over.
I don't have anything to add to that presentation, it was well done.
I sort of like the idea that we're actually integrating the systems and we're going to be using some of our existing infrastructure. That seems to be a lifesaver for us because we do have a lot of other things that we need to be fixing, so I would certainly suggest that the hybrid model seems to be the more efficient model in terms of delivering pressure, lower costs, and utilizing some of the infrastructure that we already have.
Mayor? Are you looking for us to give you direction, or do we need to take a vote at the next meeting about where we want to go, or what would you like from the council?
Essentially, and I, Craig and I have had this conversation with, in my opinion, the hybrid model is very consistent with the terms of the O&M agreement that you all have already proposed, I mean, already approved, that's in the second year now. I think the funding is there and is not an issue, so I don't know of anything specifically that you'd need official action on, but clearly, if there's any reservation on the part of the council, then I'd need to delay. But essentially, I've suggested to the City of Arlington that absent an objection by the city council when we presented this to them in a work session, that I, my recommendation that we ask Arlington to proceed as though we're going to go with all three phases of the hybrid model so that we can get the pressure improvements as well as the water and the cost benefit that they've identified. So unless, Chris, there's objection, I would, my intention would be to ask the City of Arlington to proceed as planned because it's consistent with the O&M agreement that you've already approved.
Hear any objections to that? I'm not hearing any, George.
All it takes is money, guys, but it's less money. All right. Well, I'd also like to express my personal thanks to Craig and all of the Arlington staff because this isn't the only issue that we're working with them very closely on. As you know, we're also working with them on the, on the customer service side of this, a number of folks in Craig's organization that aren't on this call that have spent a lot of time helping us get to the end of that, and I think we're nearing, getting much closer to making that conversion as well. So I thank them for all of that. And Mayor, as I've mentioned to you, we do have an unrelated, in some sense, unrelated issue also on your agenda tonight, not as a work session item, but as an action item to approve a fee schedule, so that if you are mayor inclined, we'd certainly like to either ask Lakita to make comment and present that information or take questions from you so that we might, I know Craig and Brad and, and they've all said they wanted to sit through our whole meeting, but they could leave if we could get the, get a discussion on the fees before we get to that on our regular agenda. So up to you, Mr. Mayor.
Wait, so you're saying that they'd be willing to sit through our whole meeting?
They said they were excited to do that. I really...
Well, we have another question, George. Can you say where we are on the meter conversion?
Well, yeah, Craig might better address that than I can, but I think we've got nearly all of them. You're talking about the MIU installations?
Yes, sir.
And we have identified some problems, as I understand it, with some of the last ones, but I know, Craig, can you make any, respond to that of exactly where we are with the MIU installation?
Certainly. With about 3,200 accounts, we're probably at least two-thirds through, we're continuing to do that now. We're going to be backing off on the installations to go into meter reading next week so that we can get the June reading done. We kind of put on a different hat and use some of the same people. But as George mentioned, we have run into some technical issues, and it really has to do with the connectivity of the meter, what we call the register, the kind of the face of the meter that collects the data, it's like the odometer, and we're just not playing well with some of the units that are in the system. And we've had the, the meter company's known as Neptune Meter, we've had their account representative out, he took some of the equipment back with him as trying to diagnose this. We think we'll get a resolution here fairly quick, but we're continuing to proceed with that, so as we do the reading here in June, about two-thirds of those readings will be coming in through the Arlington AMI system. So we're making very steady progress there, and like I mentioned, we just had some technical difficulties in different kinds of hardware, but we're working through all of that.
Thank you for, I know that was an unanticipated event on both sides, and we certainly appreciate your agency's willingness to work with us. And, and we certainly appreciate your agency's willingness to work with us and kind of step in and start moving forward. So thank you again for all your hard work.
We were, we were very glad to, to help. And it's, like I said, it's been challenging, but the beauty of it is we got a lot of people who have been exposed to a lot of things that, you know, they might not otherwise in their career. You know, just kind of how we're interconnecting these two systems. So it's been a, a very rewarding experience, quite frankly. There's times where my hair's falling out and back here, but other times it's, you know, like I said, been very instructive to our staff. So glad to work with you.
All right, since we have the item on the fee schedule, Lakita, would you like to talk about that? We can try to get some questions out of the way there, too?
Sure, absolutely. So what we have on the agenda tonight is approval of ordinance 704. And what that's doing is essentially moving the City of Kennedale's fees that are related to water in sewer to reflect the current City of Arlington fee schedule. And we consider it one of the, one of the steps in the process of ultimately moving everything to the City of Arlington as far as billing. We know right now in the process of installing the, the MTU infrastructure so that they can do electronic reads for us. We are in the process of having the City of Arlington staff entering our customer billing information into Inquesta within their billing environment. We have a lot of balls moving as far as that whole process. We have, City of Arlington also has been very cooperative in working with myself and, and MUNA billing as well as far as trying to get all of that information within their billing environment. And so we think that we're getting close to be, being able to not only read, have Arlington, City of Arlington to read our meters electronically, but also ultimately having them to bill for us as well. So with this item, we think it's one of the essential steps in having our customers in Kennedale to experience a lot of the same benefits that the City of Arlington customers experience. For example, our citizens, we want to be able to enjoy going on to the City of Arlington website to log in, to look at their account information, to be, to look at up to date leak detection information or up to date, up to the hour water consumption. And one of the things that we talked about doing as well and what invited this ordinance forward was converting to their fees. We want to create not only a seamless process for our customers, but we also want there to not be as much of an administrative burden on any of the staff between Kennedale or City of Arlington. And we know that that could be a great task, having to manage two different, completely different fee schedules. And so the, the thinking here is to move over to the City of Arlington fees so that everything is congruent across the board. Our customers experience the same fees that the City of Arlington customers experience when they're calling in and having questions. They don't have delays where someone is having to pull up a separate schedule and look at a separate set of fees. What we're trying to do is, what we've included with this item is a schedule that shows you the difference between the City of Kennedale fees and the City of Arlington fees. So hopefully, you've had a chance to kind of go through that. We've pulled out some highlights. And with a lot of the items, it, they're actually, we're bringing the cost up to market costs because on some of the items, we're stating in our, in our current fee schedule, we're stating a cost. Okay? But when we're converting over to the City of Arlington, we are stating at market cost. Because in some of the areas, the City of Kennedale has been behind in receiving or being reimbursed for what we're paying for certain services. And so, for example, if you look at, at the schedule that we've included, things like the utility deposits on the accounts and some of the jobs that the City of Arlington currently do for us, some of the, the operations jobs that they currently do for us, there are set fees and we want to make it at market such as the way the City of Arlington has them. And what we've asked Drew to help us with, with this particular ordinance is writing it in such a way that each time the City of Arlington updates their fees, we wouldn't have to bring it back to council to bog, bog you down with it each time. They make a $2 change or whatever the change is that they make. And so we've attached the fee schedule here, but we've also included language to point our citizens to the City of Arlington fee schedule. And that way, it's more congruent, it's equal services across the board between our customers and the City of Arlington customers. Our customers are enjoying the same benefits that the City of Arlington customers enjoy. And the administrative burden again is reduced. Those are kind of the highlights. I know there's a lot here with this fee schedule. It, it looks like a lot, but essentially, again, it's pointing to the City of Arlington fee schedule. These are fees only. We are not discussing moving over to the City of Arlington's rate, water rates, sewer rates, anything like that. Our council has the full discretion to change those things if they so desire at some point in the future. But this is not at all converting to the City of Arlington's water sewer rates or neither their impact fees. Our, with our ordinances, we don't have the ability to do that. Our impact fees are included in with our five-year capital plan. And so nothing about persists in strictly administrative fees. So with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. And we also have Craig, of course, still available to answer questions if you have any specific questions about any of the fees themselves.
Any questions, Linda?
When the City of Arlington changes those fees, what type of notification will the City of Kennedale receive and/or the customers of Kennedale?
We will go and do the normal, we will, we will notify the citizens the way that we normally do via on our webpage. We can also provide the staff the information via internal reports or any, any type of media outlets. I know Leslie has been working very closely with the media team over at the City of Arlington. And we, we have a plan in place actually already to send out notifications so that everybody is aware of what we're doing.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Chris?
I, I think it's nothing but positive. I realize that there are a fee or two here and there that may be an increase. But I think one of the points that Lakita brought up is if a customer calls in and maybe there's confusion on where they live and they're told the wrong fee or there's a delay, then that could be a problem. So I think it goes back to one of the slides we saw earlier about building trust, that us adopting their fee schedule builds trust with the City of Arlington. And I think it makes the experience for our customers a lot better. And I don't see any reason or any concern over adopting their fee schedule. And, and something else we've talked about in the past is there have been so many times where we have charged less than what it costs us to do something for a particular situation and that causes us to lose money. I think that if a customer requests a certain process, then they should pay for the cost of that process based on the market value. And Lakita has mentioned several times, that's where the schedule goes. So I think it's positive and then I have no concerns.
Sandra?
I have no concerns either. Ms. Sutton is doing a wonderful job for the city. And if she thinks this is what's best for us, I agree with her.
Josh?
I have a question that's semi-related. Did we not send out a mailer that all the auto drafts would be put on hold?
Yes, we did. We sent out a mailer in mid-April. That, yes, that auto draft will be put on hold until we were a little bit more stable with our, on the meter reads. We know that we, we've had three different, basically entities reading our meters over the past six months and fathom enough. And so we felt like it would be best to turn that off until we're stable with the City of Arlington's reads. The MTUs are installed, they can electronically read, and we can rely 100% or close enough to those reads. So yes.
Because I've been contacted, we now have people that have multiple months worth of bills. I mean, how do they go about paying that? All right. For instance, you know, a $600 bill. Can they make payments on that? Do they need to pay it all in full? And when is the auto pay going to be turned back on?
And there might be a question, Lakita, that we might need to waive some of those late fees since some people didn't know we had turned off the auto pay.
Absolutely. We have not charged the late fees since November. You'll see that is actually one of the line items in the budget amendment. We have not turned off water for late payments and we have not charged any fees. And so, but to answer your question directly, every customer, we have 115 customers on auto pay. And we were careful to notify every customer. We did not put out a big blast to everybody because of some of the other billing issues that we had. We don't want to alarm the public about something that doesn't apply to them. And so, but what we did was we did send a letter to each and every of those 115. I got maybe a couple of phone calls this week about people that didn't get their mailer or, you know, didn't read it for whatever reason. And they were all very understanding and I assured them that we would not be charging fees. We are offering payment plans for them to catch up on their bill. So I haven't received many complaints in that area.
Lakita, if I could, weren't the customers that were on automatic draft encouraged to use one of the other options to go ahead and pay their bills rather than let them accumulate? So they will give them and provide information on options other than the automatic draft?
Yes, they were.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
You're welcome. I got an earful of that, too, this week, Lakita. But I certainly appreciate, you always seem to be on top of the game and where you have had all this stuff. So thank you.
We tried our best and, and we know it's not perfect. I, you know, profusely apologize to one young lady that I spoke with earlier in the week. You know, we are doing our best. It's not going to be a perfect process, but we are definitely working with our citizens. We feel for them and we will not turn them off because of this transition.
It's okay. I blame George anyway, so we're good. Chad, questions?
No questions.
All right. So I think we're good there. George, anything else on water rates?
No, I think if that's all of the questions, that comes up later on your agenda tonight. I mean, as a, for a vote, unless you want to do it now. But I'd assume that Arlington staff to sign off if they wanted to.
Yeah, I don't think we can vote on the work session, George.
You what?
But we can't vote on the work session, but we can get it to the front of the agenda and get that out of the way so they can get it.
We've got another pretty long discussion here in work session, unless you want to go into the regular session and then come back out.
Can I do that, Drew?
Yes, if you want to.
You may have a problem with going into the work session, I mean, out into the regular session and letting Arlington get out of here?
That's item four F1 on your regular agenda.
Well, then I'll move us out of the work session into regular session. Make note that everyone's still here and we'll look at item F, right, I believe?
Four F1, yes, sir.
F1, approval of ordinance 704, mending the Kennedale City Code. Do you have a motion to do that? Don't be shy.
I'll make a motion that we approve for F1 to match the fee schedule for the City of Arlington.
Have a second.
Okay.
Thinking about Chad, any further discussion? Hearing none. Leslie, will you call the roll?
Josh Altum?
Yay.
Chris Pugh?
Yay.
Mayor Prost Emily?
Yay.
Linda Rhodes?
Yay.
Chad Wondell?
Yay.
Mayor, it passes unanimously.
All right, so we can let the City of Arlington people go. We certainly appreciate all the hard work you've done and the innovative, the innovations that you've shown have been fantastic, I think. So thank you very much for being here and thank you for the presentation.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, so we'll move back into work session and go to presentation regarding game room regulations.
Mr. Mayor, this is a request that you'll recall was originally made to us by the county back in December of 2019, that we consider adopting an interlocal agreement with the county to enforce, for the city to assume responsibility for enforcing game room, which is game room, essentially, we're talking about eight liners, the slot machine type eight liner machines, to consider taking on the responsibility of issuing permits and so, and enforcing regulations that the county has adopted. The, the county provided us with a draft of an ILA or an interlocal agreement for us to assume that responsibility in January of 2020. And we actually had it on your agenda to discuss in mid-February, but we had a number of other things on the agenda that night, including the domestic violence ordinances and work session. So we postponed consideration of this ordinance. But in summary, the state law authorizes county governments to regulate game rooms. The Tarrant County Commissioners Court adopted back in late 2019 what they named as the game room regulations. And I have included those regulations, it's a pretty thick packet, in your agenda packet. And I think I had given it to you before in, back in February as well. But the, that policy that the county adopted, and Drew, you step in here if I'm misrepresenting any of this in any way, because it's a very complicated and long policy. But essentially, the policy that the County Commissioners Court adopted has made an assumption and an interpretation of the statute that says the counties can and should regulate game rooms in all parts of the county. And the Commissioners Court has interpreted that to mean including the incorporated portions of Tarrant County. And so the county policy, though, provides, the policy that the county adopted, provides that while they're charged with the responsibility of regulating, issuing permits, enforcing regulations, revoking permits, et cetera, they can, under their own policy that they've adopted, they could shift that responsibility to the cities individually if the cities wanted to be sure that they were issuing the permits, that they were working with, with clients who are customers who may want to implement or initiate game rooms of some type and that the cities themselves would be regulating that within their own corporate limits. And as the county officials that we visited with, their concern was they didn't particularly like the idea that the state had said, you, you county regulate these game rooms within the corporate limits of all of the cities in your county and that they would then be walking across the city limit boundary, so to speak, and enforcing regulations that might better be provided and performed by the local jurisdiction. So the county's policy provides that if cities want to assume that responsibility themselves, they can do that by entering into an interlocal agreement. They provided an interlocal agreement to us and we have reviewed it, we've looked at it. I sent to you. I sent to you today a five-page document that Wayne Olson had drafted back in February when we first were going to put this on the agenda, expressing some concern about the way the county has interpreted some of the statutory requirements and other issues that Drew may want to speak to more specifically. But there's, some of the state law is not very clearly written. But the point is, the county doesn't particularly want to be coming into Kennedale and saying where a game room can locate, how they can function, how they can perform, and issuing permits. So they're willing to delegate that authority to us through an ILA. What's been provided in your packet is an interlocal agreement that probably doesn't answer all of the concerns that Wayne has expressed in that five-page document. But it's probably a start. It will at least put the responsibility back in our hands for regulating game rooms. There's not anything absolutely pressing that this needs to be done. In my opinion, it's probably better to get that authority back in the city's hands before we have applications or people who want to start up new game rooms. And Josh, I know you've identified just today that there are a couple of them here in town. But in that these regulations would probably apply to. But we've got this on your agenda without going into all the detail of the county policy. It essentially shifts our, the ability to issue those permits, enforce the policies that the county has adopted, and place that in the hands of the City of Kennedale. And I think long run, even if we need to amend that down the road at some point as some of those questions that Wayne has asked, has raised, may get clarified. I think it's a good thing for us to enter into that ILA with the county sooner rather than later. So with that, I just opened it up, Mr. Mayor, for questions. I know that Drew's reviewed these documents and I'm not sure how involved he was with it back in favor, but I know he's reviewed it quite a bit last week, so we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Josh, any questions for the attorney or Drew, or for attorney, it's Drew, or George?
No, I'm good.
Sandra?
No.
Chad?
I guess really is, how much of an issue is this in our city currently? I know you said Josh identified some of them, like, what's happening in our city?
Josh may want to speak to that. He went to a couple of, I'm not even familiar with him personally, but a couple of places where there are some apparently eight liners. And he spoke, had some conversation with the owners. But I think concluded that there was probably a need for regulation.
Yeah, I've visited a few of them here in our city and they are in violation, according to the county, as far as the school goes. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, because I'm getting a phone call. According to the regulations, they need to be further than 1,000 feet from a school. Both of them are in violation of that. They need to be more than 1,000 feet from the neighborhood. Those are both in violation of that. All windows need to be visible, not blocked. Both of the ones in our town are in violation of that. They need to have a second means of egress, like a fire escape, other than the entry. They're in violation of that. So when I spoke with one of the owners, I just was inquiring about what he thought about them, if he may profit from them. He said, "No," basically what it is, it gets customers into the store. But the problem is, is the type of customers that he gets into the store. Because in the long run, those customers cause issues with the city after hours and stuff like that. So in my opinion, I think it needs to be regulated more. And I think going with this agreement would help do that, so.
Okay. That just sounds a little awkward, though, when the owner says it pulls the wrong type of people in. Just get rid of them dang things, but, okay, no, I don't really have other questions than that.
All right.
It says on here that the $1,000 permanent fee, that's what the county will obtain. Is there any revenue that the city can or will be obtaining for the cost, you know, to cover the cost of this service?
No. Linda, I think my understanding was, I'll go back and look at that. My understanding was if we enter into the ILA, the city is able to collect that fee.
That's correct, George.
Oh, okay. Good. Thank you. That's all I have.
Chris?
My concerns are similar to Josh's, that the two that I know of are in violation of pretty much all the major tenants of the agreement. How long would we give them to fall in line? What is the penalty? I don't want this to be where we give them warning after warning after warning after warning. But I also know if you go and tell a business, well, you have to change your windows, you have to add a fire exit. That's a substantial amount of money. So I think if we adopt this agreement, I would like for us to look at it on the front side as to what's the plan for asking those businesses to come in compliance or denying their permit? Because I don't want this to go on for months or years as we have unfortunately had a tendency in the past to just let people, "Well, I'm getting bids, or I'm doing this, or I talked to a guy." I think we need to say, hey, if it requires that you have a second egress, you have this many days. If you don't, you're in violation, your permits revoked. That's just my opinion. And I see Chad agreeing somewhat with what I'm saying. But, I mean, it's a big deal to me that if we're going to pass an ordinance, then I think we ought to have the clawbacks and the plan to enforce it rather than just passing an ordinance for the sake of passing it and constantly giving forgiveness because they're working on it.
Let me let Drew respond, just specifically to make sure that this is applicable to existing game rooms. But there are also some provisions in the policy where we'll name our administrator. There may be some code changes that we're going to need to do, but I think could be done relatively soon. And primarily, I want to get it implemented before we have new applications or new ones coming in. And then we'll address the other ones as quickly and as appropriately as we can.
One thing to remember is these regulations are already in effect. Tarrant County's already adopted these regulations, so any businesses that are in violation, they're in violation. So there's enforcement provisions that are in the agreement. So the city would have the option to enforce the regulations. It would do that through arrest. You know, one thing that I would like to point out is Tarrant County is reserving the exclusive right to file suit against these businesses to shut them down and to get a civil penalty. You know, that function was not delegated to the cities in the interlocal agreement. So any enforcement action the city were to take, it would be through criminal action and not, not that there would be no civil remedy. It would be up to the county. The way the agreement's written now would be up to the county to enforce that through the civil courts. But as far as permitting, you know, these regulations are in effect. They have been, any existing businesses that had game rooms, you know, they had until April 15th to get with the county and file the documents they needed to let the county know they were exempted. So if they haven't done that, then they shouldn't be operating based off the county regulations.
Tommy, have we had a lot of problems with the game rooms? Have we had a lot of criminal activity around them or any other issues that we should know about?
The only one that I am aware of that we've had any issues with was the convenience store at Valley and Kennedale Parkway. We shut that down twice because they were running, if I remember correctly, about 16 of those machines. In fact, they weren't even selling merchandise. It was basically a game room. But the others, the ones that are up close to the school, I wasn't aware they had more than a couple, three machines in. They must have moved some newer machines in since the last time I was in there, so. But the pack and snack or sack and snack, whatever that was, is we had a lot of criminal activity coming in and out. There were a lot of narcotic sales. There was some prostitution going on down there. We've got a lot of stolen vehicles going in and out of the parking lot. But it seemed like it kind of died down the last time we shut it down. They seemed to really dial it back and start watching who came in and who didn't. I haven't heard of anything recently down there.
All right. Thank you. Did I miss anybody for questions? No?
Mayor, if I may make one other, the ILA that's in your packet and that is on the agenda later on in the regular meeting is the one that was redlined and made some changes from the original one that the county submitted by Wayne. And I think my recommendation is that although Russell Shaffner had originally said they wanted all of them to be the same, that we adopt the one, or you approve the one if you're going to approve it with the changes that Wayne made on it, and let's see how the county reacts to that. And because I think it cleans up some language.
All right. Any other discussion? All right, so let's move on to COVID-19. George, my question is real quickly, what steps are we taking to try to at least reopen parts of City Hall? I know there's COVID funding out there for us to create barriers and other safety procedures. Are we applying for that? What are we applying for?
Well, first of all, let me say that you all remember that you, the council approved at your last meeting, the ILA with the county so that we could get the coronavirus or the CARES Act funding. That was approved by the Commissioners Court a week ago today. We haven't gotten our check from them yet, but I did go online and it was approved by the Commissioners Court. We're also in the process of trying to identify, excuse me, everything. And each department director is submitting things. Daniella is coordinating it to try to accumulate a list of anything that we can identify that is a cost that qualifies for the CARES funding. Today, we had a contractor in City Hall, at least I think, James, he got here and was in the building, trying to look at some improvements and some things we can do to put up various kinds of protection and shielding in the council chambers itself. And then I had talked with one staff member today, and I'm going to refine this tomorrow, but to try to put together a plan that we can show the council for some kind of reopening process of City Hall in a step-by-step basis. Do we want to go back to implementing where employees are working in City Hall with limited staffing in each department on a rotating basis? When would we think it'd be appropriate to open it after we get certain things done in the building to the public? Right now, frankly, we don't see any real pressing need to open the building to the public and we'd rather take that in steps, particularly while we're seeing all of the reports of how, of the increased cases of coronavirus and the increased occupancy of hospital beds. But we're going to work on a plan of how best to do that and then when to implement it. So we should be getting back with you with a plan about that in the short run here. And then some of the improvements we're making, the purchases we're going to make, which salaries can be covered by the CARES Act funding is all, we're trying to accumulate all of that so we can get a full picture because we need to respond. We're going to have some deadlines. One, to spend that CARES fund money, that CARES funding. And even earlier than that, probably to report to the county if we think for any reason we're not going to be able to spend all of the money that we're going to get. I do believe that with the allowance for particularly public safety salaries to be covered with that, that we're not going to have a problem spending the money that we've been allocated. But we don't have it all together yet. Brian, you're muted.
Muted, I'm muted. Are we going to be looking at some major upgrades in the senior center? Seems that would be a good place to have a lot of protection, not only from COVID-19, but future flu, cold, whatever.
There are, we have been provided a list of, kind of a wish list of things that need to be done that we already, we've identified at the senior center and that they have identified and given us a list of. And we're trying to identify which of that we think is going to be eligible for CARES funding. So that's in the mix at this point and would be considered.
All right, questions? Chad? Josh?
No, sir.
Sandra?
No.
Linda?
No question, just a comment. I know my mom's anxious for that senior center to be opened back up. So the quicker the better.
Chris? Now, all right, so is there any other items on the agenda that you wish to discuss? We have about 22 minutes.
Brian, can we discuss the consent agenda, item three?
Yeah, what is consent agenda, item three? The senior, go ahead.
It's about making them reapply every two years. Are they already having to reapply every two years? Or is that something new?
No, that's something new. I'll let Lakita address it more specifically. But we have identified, even before this came up, where we wanted to increase the fee, Sandra. Where we have no way of knowing whether somebody who met the criteria when they walked in the door and applied, they may be getting that discount when in fact they no longer meet the criteria. If their income has increased above what the minimum is, we just don't have any mechanism built into the ordinance to allow us to know that the people who are receiving those discounts are entitled to them based on the criteria that makes them eligible in the first place. So we're recommending and suggesting that we give some way for us to modify that or monitor it in a better way. And they're probably in a better way than to have them reapply for it.
Well, and I don't have any issue with having them reapply. It's just that with some seniors, they can't even remember to take their medicine. So it's a good chance they won't remember to reapply. So is there anything that we can do as a city to?
I think there would be a way that we could create a file and send them a notice of some kind that they need to reapply in order to be sure that they still qualified. And I think there's a way that we could shift that burden to us to at least remind them to do that.
All right, thank you, George.
Okay.
George, along those same lines, and I don't want to overcomplicate it, but, and maybe Lakita can answer exactly. I mean, if someone is, I don't know what the age is, but if the age limit of one of the tenants is being over 65, but once they're over 65, they're over 65 forever. So I don't know if every one of those provisions need to be, like, versus an income could change. But if you qualify because of your age, you don't get any younger. Is it difficult to make it where once they meet the age requirement, they're permanently exempt? Or is it, I don't know how the software works?
Well, Chris, that's part of, I mean, the fact of the matter is when you're over age 65, and I'm there so I can talk about this. I mean, the fact of the matter is, there may be situations where somebody qualified for that some time back and has died since then, and we don't know that in the household. And the income in the household may have exceeded the income requirement. And so it's just a number of factors that go into qualifying for it. And we'd like some way to refresh that and to at least review it on some kind of a regular basis.
Lakita, is this something that you've done in other cities?
Yes, I have done it in other cities. I did it, the program that we had, our program here in Kennedale is the age of 60 and meeting the income requirement. And I've seen it done that way and I've also seen it done where there was simply the age requirement and no income requirement. So it's pretty much up to the council. The way that we already have it in place is the age and the income. And so with this ordinance, we would just be amending it with the increase in the discount and also with, you know, the ability to go and check and ensure that the senior is still qualified.
So are you saying that?
I've seen it done both ways.
Lakita, how do they, I mean, do they send you their tax return or how do you verify their income?
When they originally apply, yes, they will give you either a copy of their social security statement that they get monthly or they will give you a copy of their tax return to prove their income.
Any way we can do that online where they wouldn't have to necessarily? We can do that online where they wouldn't have to necessarily, again, I'm not trying to overcomplicate it. I'm just asking questions to make it as easy as we can for these citizens.
Yeah, absolutely. And I mean, we currently only, only about 180 citizens right now have the senior discount and things that come along with that. And so it wouldn't be too much of an administrative burden to, you know, send notices out, you know, to put the processes online for those who are able to do it that way. I know some seniors, they don't deal with the online thing and they don't like that. And so we want to still keep it open with the ability for them to bring it in, email it in, whatever is convenient for them.
Okay.
Yeah, once again, Lakita, it seems like you're on top of the game, one step ahead of us. Any other questions on the agenda that you want to talk about?
I have another question regarding the same subject. Under section five on the ordinance, it says it's going to be effective whenever the transfer, the billing is transferred to the city of Arlington. I would like to see that done on the July billing. And the reason why, I guess because this whole thing came up as a result of the drainage fee increase of the dollar, and this was another way that we could help our seniors. Well, if we wait till the billings transfer future, why don't we just go ahead and do it on the July billing? I would like to see it done then, but not sure what the reasoning was to delay it.
Part of it, Linda, was because right now the billing and the discount is part of the process that muni billing does to provide that. So we'd have to get it corrected on the data in the billing system. Understand it, with muni billing, maybe 30 days before we're going to implement it with Arlington anyway, and then do it again. It just creates an opportunity for us to, for mistakes to be made by having to have muni billing do it when they're not going to be doing it for us anymore in a very short time. We could investigate it and see how hard it would be to do that. And I'm just trying to do everything we can to avoid creating changes with muni billing that can't get implemented correctly and creates a problem.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Question, I might be stretching just a little, so if I am, Drew can tell me to stop. I know we're going to talk about the subdivisions and the approved developments and things tonight. I've had some folks express concern over the retention pond at Magnolia Hills, which does not have a water effect in it right now being completely full. And we are in the height of mosquito season. And I'm wondering, do we have any, even if it's just asking that they do a better job of trying to pump that pond dry so that we don't have a several thousand gallon mosquito breeding pool?
Larry, have you had any discussions with them about that pond recently?
Not recently. There is way too much wave action for mosquitoes to be breeding too abundantly in that pond. But I will have a conversation with them. We're waiting on their paving contractor to show up. They need to construct the proper outfall for that pond, so it will drain out. So that's the holdup.
Because I know they've pumped it dry a couple of times, but then with the recent rains, it's 90% full probably. I mean, it's almost to the top of the stone.
Yes, they had to pump it dry, one at our request, the other to get the walls built, and the walls have been built.
Yes, sir.
So waiting for that paving contractor to come in to properly build that can, outfall. And then that won't be a problem any longer. And like I said, the wave action will keep the mosquitoes down or virtually zero. But we can certainly check that. We have chemical that we could treat that if it does become a problem.
Okay, thank you, Larry. I appreciate it.
All right, any other questions? All right, so we've got 13 minutes. We'll end this work session and then we'll reconvene here in about 13 minutes. So go take a break. Chris, get a drink of alcohol, whatever it is you do. And we'll come back in 13 minutes. Yeah, I couldn't hear that. You were muted. Thanks, Chris. Was it, we're waiting on Chris? He parried down the tipsy turtle.
I heard my name at the end. What was your comment there, Mayor?
I thought maybe you ran down the tipsy turtle.
I could have.
You could have. All right, so let's get this regular session started. Let's see what you call the roll.
Josh Alton?
Here.
Chris Pugh?
Here.
Mayor Protenly?
Here.
Linda Rhodes?
Here.
Chad Wando?
Here.
Here, all are in attendance.
All right, so do we have anybody signed up for the Citizens Visitors Forum? I'm seeing none. So we'll move on to updates from the council. Linda Rhodes, any updates?
Not really, just been busy at my, my household has been real busy preparing for new twin grandbabies. They should be here next month, so wish me luck.
Good luck. And congratulations.
Thank you.
Sandra?
No updates. I just want to thank Chief Williams. His officers have been patrolling Kenneady, senior apartments and the tenants are really appreciative. And also Larry Hoover for getting those sidewalks in. So thank y'all, gentlemen.
Chad?
Just wanted to share a story with everybody. I don't know if you saw it. I personally posted it publicly, but I didn't share it on my council page. But over the Memorial Day weekend, a neat little package arrived at my house. So the story behind it, this interesting little packet was, I was contacted the weekend before Memorial Weekend from a group of people that were using metal detectors out on the beach at Lake Michigan. And they got an interesting ping on the beach and they dug down about 10 inches down and they found my grandfather's Airman bracelet. And what makes it really interesting is that's where he died. He was in a plane crash in his Voodoo F-101 over Lake Michigan, crashed a mile off the beach. And they actually wound up finding his bracelet, which I have right here.
That's awesome.
Talk about incredible because that was 19 Talk about incredible, because that was 1964. So the fact that it's even been found is mind blowing, but then the fact that it arrived the day before Memorial Day. That was pretty intense, so just wanted to share that story, because we need some good news in the world.
That's a great story, I read that, that's amazing. Chris.
I just want to thank both of the chiefs and their staffs, I know that right now with everything that's going on, there's a lot of additional steps. You know, I know just at my work, when someone brings a car in for an oil change, how much disimpairing we do. I can only imagine if someone gets taken in the ambulance or is taken into custody, the procedure the officers and the firemen and EMTs have to follow. And I just want to give a thanks to both of the chiefs and both of the departments for the extra work that they're having to do to keep not only themselves safe, but to keep their patients safe, and then to prepare that vehicle to be safe for the next person they have to transport, because I know that's a lot of time, it's a lot of effort. It's a lot of detail. And I just want to thank both of them for, I know Chief Brown has been on numerous calls to keep everybody safe and has been kind of the policeman for the city of what do we need to do procedurally and, and all the officers, all the firemen, all the EMTs have taken on an extra workload in addition to patrolling our streets, dealing with everything that's going on just day to day, and I just wanted to give a thank you to both departments and their, their staff for their hard work.
Josh.
I just want to second what Chris said, appreciate the chiefs and all the hard work they've done. Believe me, I know it's been, been crazy, crazy times we're living in. Also want to say, next council meeting will have pretty, some exciting news, where I've got two young gentlemen that during this COVID epidemic, they decided to do something for the seniors, so they went out and did something, raised some money and I'll get with you and we'll, we'll see if we can't present them with something, so. Other than that, that's about it, I guess.
Alright, well, and for mayor update, I attended the mayor's council, we did that virtually. And the TRTC meeting that we've also attended virtually. And I also like to thank Chief Williams, because I know Jen Joplin had sent some really interesting questions, important questions, and your answers were great, I've gotten a lot of phone calls about that and text messages about your answers, and so, thank you Tommy for doing that. And finally, let's go to George.
Mayor, I don't have anything that didn't come up during the work session, so I don't have anything additional.
Alright, but let's move on to financial reports.
Good evening, you have included in your packet a summary of funds and kind of where we stand as of the end of the month of May. And you will see that we, we know that we're about 66% into the fiscal year. And where has the time gone, but here we are. Our general fund revenue is at 86%, which is expected, this time last year we were at 84% in the general fund. We've already seen, received 100% of our property tax revenue, which is normal due to the timing of the year. Sales tax is at 63%, last year was at 76%. That's no cause for alarm, just yet, we don't really know what the effects of COVID are going to be at this time. For the report that you have for the month of May, we're showing the collection at 159,000. And then this time last year, we were at 150,000, and so not much of a difference there. But again, the sales tax that you see reflected in this month's financials is for sales that occurred in March. So we're still a little ways out before we know anything about what COVID is going to do. But we are making some recommendations to adjust sales tax revenue as far as what we're projecting in a later agenda item. For expenditures in the general fund, we're at 59%. This time last year we were at 61%, so we're tracking right where we thought we would be. And the street fund, we know that all of that revenue comes from franchise fees. You see us tracking a little bit behind there, but that's more of a timing issue because of the various different franchise fees coming in at different times of the year. So some of those, we don't actually see that revenue until towards the, the end of fiscal year, so we're okay there, even though we're, we're only showing 54% on revenue. In the water fund, really the only thing there is, you know, we're not collecting as much in penalties and fees. And we know that since Fathom's departure, we've been being more lenient with our citizens as far as late payments and things like that, so you won't see much fees on the financials this far in the year. And we plan to keep that in place, you know, until we can finish with the transition to Arlington, so. Another thing in the water fund, you will see increase in revenue, but also increase in expenditures. We know that comes from also having to start new contracts with Muni Billing and Water Smart and the different entities that we've had to contract with to keep the customers getting the same level of service that we had through Fathom, so. That's about all that I have as far as highlights. If there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer those.
Are there any questions, Chris?
So I know earlier, Lakita asked George a question about where we were with the O and M agreement with Arlington. I'm, I know that the MIUs that they're replacing are not free. Where do we stand, I mean, is that part of the 500,000 that George mentioned earlier that we've
No.
paying, or are we paying for that out of the surplus, or? And, and what is that anticipated expenditure after the cost of the units and the installation fees?
We haven't been billed just yet, but to answer your question, no, that's a completely separate pot of money from the capital money that George talked about in the work session. For the MTU infrastructure, we brought an item to the council several months back. And we were given permission to go ahead and or we're paying for that, about 500,000 or so expense out of our fund reserves and then reimbursing the funds after we look at some type of CO or some type of other funding mechanism to pay for those. But we haven't been invoiced or anything like that yet. We're, we're in the loop, and Arlington is in the loop with, you know, where we stand, you know, financially and how we're gonna work on financing that, so, but no, that's completely two separate pots of money.
Is that at one point, there was maybe a, we were guesstimating what the cost was going to be because of the labor? We, we still feel like we're going to fall within that original estimate?
I have not, I received any updated estimate from the city of Arlington, so I'm still thinking it's going to be about 500 to 550,000.
Okay. Thank you.
George, I thought we were going to take some of that money out of the tax notes to pay for that.
No, I don't, for the MIUs, for the, I thought we were going to take it out of the water reserves.
I think we discussed taking it out of the reserves, mayor.
Yeah, we were going to take it out of the reserves and then, you know, later if we need to re, reimburse any fund for it, you know, we put an ordinance in place to where we can cover it, but still reimburse any fund that we need to reimburse for that upfront expenditure, so if we later decide to go out and get, you know, some other funding source, a CO or something like that, we can reimburse whatever fund we used to pay for it initially.
Any other questions for Lakita?
No, I got a question for you, how'd you get that dog in that council chambers like that?
I have special powers, Josh.
It's the worst dog in the city of Kennedyale, it does nothing its owner tells it to.
It's like the mayor. Alright, so let's go to the consent agenda. These items just are routine, usually don't require any discussion. Does anybody have anything they want to remove from the consent agenda?
Mayor, there's a correction to the May 19 minutes, it's just a minor correction.
You want to state it and then make a motion to approve the consent agenda with that correction?
Yes. It's a, I believe it's on page four of the minutes. When it references the May 19 council meeting, it says regular meeting and that one was a special meeting. Was that the correct date, Leslie? I'd said that earlier, so.
Yes, that's what I remember it saying.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda with that one correction to the minutes of May 19.
Have a second. I guess, Andrew seconded it, okay. Alright, all those in favor, Leslie called the roll.
Josh Altam.
Yay.
Chris Pugh.
Yay.
Mayor Proton Lee.
Yay.
Linda Rhodes.
Yay.
Chad Wando.
Yay.
Passed unanimously.
Alright, so we're going to move on to item F2, approval ordinance of 705 amending the fiscal year 2019-2020 adopted budget of the city of Canada.
Mayor and council, we're bringing for, to you tonight, ordinance number 705, and what that's doing is amending our current year budget. As we know, according to our charter, if there are any unforeseen expenses or things that come up throughout the fiscal that the council has voted to approve or any cancellation of any programs or anything like that, the staff has the responsibility to bring that forward to recommend a budget amendment, so this is basically just our regular kind of mid-year true-up process, and what we've gone through is, and done is ask all of the departments to take a close look at their revenues and expenditures and make an estimate, make a projection as to where they think we'll end the fiscal year. And I've talked with George about each and every item that we've included in appendix A that is attached to your ordinance. And I know it's a little bit wordy, but we wanted to, since we have a line item budget, we wanted to go and include the line items that were essentially changing. In addition to any new program or anything that the council approved outside of the budget, we've also included quite a few savings, and normally we wouldn't bring forth a budget amendment to talk about savings, but with the crisis that we're having right now, and also with the, the communication that we've been having with our rating agency, we want to make sure that we are very transparent in any, anything that we can do that's positive with our budget, because truthfully, we know that we're still kind of catching up from a previous year of adopting a tax rate that didn't match our budgets. And so, in the process of catching up with that, we wanted to go through on this particular budget amendment and not only include programs that were approved outside of the budget, but we also want to show savings as well. And if you had a chance to look at your council report, you can see that in the general fund, let's see. In the general fund, we initially budgeted to draw down our fund balance quite a bit. Eight hundred and sixty-two thousand nine hundred and forty-four dollars. And with the budget amendment that we're presenting tonight, we're looking for an improvement with that, which is great. We're looking to reduce that by approximately $200,000. Also, we, we looked at our sales tax, because we know that that is something that COVID-19 has probably affected in some way, that we may not see the impact of it until later in the fiscal year. So as a best practice, in my group that I'm a part of, a lot of cities our size are just going through and basically making a really conservative projection and applying a 10 to 15% reduction in sales tax. So you'll see that we're doing that, it's really a negligible effect though on our overall sales tax. We're budgeted to bring in 1.4 million and we're only adjusting that down by about 32,000. That's because we were already ahead of where we thought we would be this time of year. So we really took a really close look at that, all of the general fund revenue, and did the best that we could to come up with more accurate projections. It's very important for us to have this kind of true-up process done, so that as we move into planning for fiscal year 2021, we're accurately reporting to the council what our fund balance is going to look like. So within appendix A, among other changes, I won't go through all of them, but just some to highlight, in the general fund, we are decreasing our overall revenue in the general fund by approximately $54,000. Okay, you can see a lot of that is, like I said, some of it is due to sales tax decreasing, and some of it is due to decreased development activity. I mean, we know that due to COVID, people haven't been traveling much, we had, you know, we're, City Hall has been closed. We haven't been able to essentially bring in the development activity that we thought we were at the beginning of the year. So we found it appropriate to adjust several line items within community development. And you can see those listed there, I won't, I won't go through each and every one of them. Another thing that affects the general fund is our court proceedings. Court has been closed, we didn't have court April, May, June. So of course, we didn't get to hear some of the cases, some of the cases we did get to hear, we've been working with the judge being as lenient as we possibly can with fines and fees, but that does affect our revenue as well. So overall, you'll see a drop in projected revenue by 54,000 in the general fund. But consequently, you'll also see a decrease in spending. And some of that is basically due to vacancies, you know, since we have been out for COVID, some of the hiring processes have been delayed some. In some cases, we, we may, we not, may not been able to find the right fit for certain positions. I know within police, we've had a longstanding vacancy there. And that has, you know, consequently given us some savings in that area, so. Some of them you'll see due to vacancies, but some of the decreases you'll also see that are due to travel and training. When we initially ran into this COVID situation that was very unexpected, we tried to put our heads together and figure out ways that we could save. We didn't know how this would ultimately affect our revenue. And to still balance the budget, you know, we have a duty to go through and see what we can do to mitigate that situation. And so, we, we wanted to proactively look at not attending some of the training that we initially attended, intended to go to. Not missing a beat with it, because we were still able to do some of them via Zoom and different other mechanisms. But some of our training opportunities were canceled anyway, because we just simply couldn't travel. So in every department, pretty much in the general fund, you'll see some of the savings are due to reduced travel and various other reasons listed there. In the, in the drainage fund, you'll see that we wanted to go ahead and adjust that revenue, because in the, at the beginning of the budget process, we were, we talked about updating our stormwater fee, and we know that we didn't end up doing that till later in the year. And so consequently, we had to reduce that revenue back down. But it's fine, moving forward, we'll be collecting it, but instead of collecting it the whole fiscal year, we've only started collecting that additional revenue in the month of June. In the water sewer fund, you pretty much have a wash there with what we're projecting, and so we've included this budget amendment that we are expected to reduce our revenue by 265,000, but we're also going to make an adjustment to expenditures, well, that's pretty much going to wash each other out. We had some expected, unexpected expenditures with the additional contracts with Fathom's departure, but and we then, we also had a change in the penalties and different fees and everything that we were changing to try to accommodate our customers better. So revenue increased and expenditures increased, so you pretty much have a wash in the water sewer fund. Um, let's see. In several of the capital projects, I mean, we know that certain things we approved after the budget. We have in there a, um, impact fee study. That's the $100,000 expense. We adopted the budget in, uh, September and then we had a meeting in November that, um, you know, we needed to update our impact fee study. And so that is something that is in the works right now, but that was in a $100,000 in expense that we're charging to, um, the street impact fund. So all the detail is listed there. Um, hopefully you've had a chance to look at it. But if you have any specific questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
So are we, did I get that right? We're still expecting to draw down on our reserves by about $600,000?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions for the Kida? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance, uh, 706, 705, sorry.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance, you know, number 705.
Wait, wait, second. And a peace sign from Chris. I don't know what that's about. Uh, any further discussion? All right, would you call the roll? Leslie for the vote?
Josh Altam.
Yay.
Chris Pugh. Chris, we can't hear you. Yay, okay. Mayor Brooks Emily.
Yay.
Linda Rhodes.
Yay.
And Chad Wando.
Yay.
Mayor passes unanimously.
All right, next item up is consider authorizing the city manager to sign an interlocal agreement with the county game room regulations permitting an enforcement written with, within the city limits. George? Unmute George.
Don't have anything to add that we didn't talk about in the work session? Do you have further questions? And my recommendation is that we go ahead and adopt the ordinance as it was modified by city attorney's office.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the interlocal agreement. Then we'll have some more discussion. I'm moving. Ladies first.
No, good. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the interlocal agreement.
I have a second.
I'll say.
All right, second Chad Wando. Sorry, Chris, you didn't hit your buzzer fast enough. Further discussion? All right, uh, Leslie, would you call the vote?
Josh Altam.
Yay.
And Chris Pugh.
Yay.
Mayor Brooks Emily.
Yay.
Linda Rhodes.
Yay.
Chad Wando.
Yay.
Passed unanimously, mayor.
All right, uh, last item up is, uh, conduct a public hearing and consider ordinance 706 regarding their request by, uh, Ahmed and Teresa Kamesh for rezoning from R2 to R3 residential for approximately eight acres located at 56, 58, 69 Eden Road, uh, city of Canada, Tarrant County. Uh, Melissa, you're up.
Uh, thank you. Good evening, mayor and council. Uh, I'm gonna try and share my screen. Hopefully it will work. Y'all see that?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, here we go. Okay, so, um, this is a request to rezone 5869 Eden Road. It's currently zoned R2. It, uh, as you can see here on the map, this is the location. It fronts Eden Road. Um, this is about an eight acre tract that, um, is, it has a pretty significant, uh, mouse to work here. A pretty significant utility quarter in the front. It's fairly, uh, long and narrow, uh, which I, I think the applicant is here, um, if you have questions for him. But, um, I think that the reason for the request is because of the, primarily the shape of the lot, which is a bit challenging, uh, to develop. And, um, like I said, there is a very large utility quarter in front of this. Um, you can see here the zoning, uh, this is R2. It has a combination of R1, R2, and R3 zoning in the surrounding area and, uh, as well as a mobile home development. Uh, there, this is Beacon Hill up here, um, just kind of catty corner. Uh, and Falcon Wood is across the street. Um, you'll see also that there's a substantial amount of R3 zoning in the area. Uh, and then I wanted to talk a little bit about what that R3 zoning is. I know you're, uh, probably familiar with that. But, um, basically the R3 has the same requirements as R2 except for the spatial requirements. So the R2 is 100 foot minimum, uh, front width and then 125 foot depth. And the R3 is 80 foot by 100 foot. Uh, so a little bit smaller lot. Um, the impervious requirement is the same. Uh, R2 has a 40 foot front setback minimum and then R3 has 30 foot minimum setback. Uh, and then R2 has a 30 foot total side setback and R3 is 20. Uh, so that means like 15 and 15 or, uh, 10 and 10, that sort of thing. Um, here's some pictures of Oak Hill Park. There's a number of R3 zone developments, um, in the city. This Oak Hill Park, we have Beacon Hill, which is, uh, very close by. Uh, Steeplechase is zoned R3. Uh, Winding Creek. So just to give you a sense of, uh, the size of the lots that we're talking about, of course, they would have to meet all of the other requirements in our, in our code. Um, to give you a sense of kind of what has been developed over the last couple of years, which I'm, I imagine y'all are familiar with, but we've had, you know, several developments, all of which have been quite a bit smaller than the R3. Uh, we've had, uh, primarily 50 foot wide lot developments, uh, including Magnolia Hills, um, and, uh, Glenna Village Creek, for example. This is a current land use map. It's not that current, but it hasn't changed that much in this area. This is from the 2012 Conference of Plan. But, um, you can see here, the yellow is residential. Um, this is really designated to be a residential area and it's, um, beginning to, uh, become that one development at a time. Um, here you see Falcon Wood across the street. This is Beacon Hill up in the left corner.
It's a difference in the size of it.
This is the, uh, subject site. Uh, you can see kind of a hodgepodge of uses here. Um, this shows as vacant land, but actually there's a metal building on the site. Uh, has a kind of an interesting, um, history on this side. It's been sort of light industrial use for probably 20 years plus. Um, but the property went vacant. Uh, we determined it had lost its grandfather status. Um, and actually the, that decision went to the board of adjustment, uh, as an appeal and it was upheld. So, um, the metal building that's on site has lost its grandfathering status. And so the, um, residential zoning means that it should develop as residential. This is the future land use map, which shows, um, this, all of this yellow, um, to be residential. So the request is consistent with the Conference of Plan in that it is, uh, proposed to be residential development. Uh, so this is a site. It's a vacant piece of property. It's a little bit hard to see, but there's a metal building back where this drive goes back. Um, I would presume that metal building will be demolished for single-family homes. Um, here's an aerial view. You can see, uh, here's the site with, uh, the yellow star. And, uh, this is Falcon Wood, um, Beacon Hill just, uh, right here. That's R3 zoning. Falcon Wood is R1 zoning. Those are a little bit larger lot development. Uh, and then this is another subdivision, but that's in Arlington, just as incidentally, this is essentially R3 zoning, 80, uh, 80 foot wide lots. So the R3 zoning and that type of development would be very consistent with, uh, what's in the surrounding area. Um, this kind of shows that this is the lot with the star on it. Um, this is Beacon Hill right here with the 80 foot R3 lots. And then you just have sort of a variety, 89 foot, 80 foot, 50 foot, 72 foot, a variety of lots in the area. Um, and then of course Falcon Woods across the street with the larger lots. So the request for the R3 zoning is consistent with the Conference of Plan. Uh, P&amp;Z recommended approval unanimously at their May 19th, uh, meeting and staff does recommend approval of zoning.
Before we get to questions from Melissa, you said that the applicant's online?
I think so. They said they'd be here, but I can't, you know, see a name on it.
Is the applicant online for an applicant presentation or question?
Yes, can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay. There's, um, one possible correction that I'd like to make. Um, the first slide that was shown shows one narrow track, which is about four acres. So it's really both tracks. Uh, the track east of it is also included.
Uh, I apologize. He's correct. Both, both of them have the same address. I apologize.
Yes, no problem. Thank you.
Anything else, Terry?
Um, no, uh, I, I'll, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have. But, uh, I think staff did a good job on presenting the case. Um, and we're looking forward to working with, uh, the city of Canada.
Any questions for Terry before we, uh, let him go?
Well, I'm glad they clarified the additional track. That makes a huge difference. Uh, I do have a question for him. Does he know how much of that front part is a utility easement? Can homes be built within that easement?
It's 100, uh, there are no acreage wise, but it's 150 foot wide on core. And it's not an easement. It's actually a fee simple, uh, track. So it really is a separate track. And there's, uh, there, there's a little, uh, uh, remnants piece in the front, right here. That little, uh, triangular piece, that's not part of the easement. It is part, also part of the property.
This, this part is actually separate. It's actually in my own, own core.
That's correct.
All right, so Melissa, that means that without that section, there's still eight acres available for building.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions for Terry?
Yeah, you can't develop, uh, within that, that section. So there can be a street under it, uh, possibly green space. They'll need to work with Encore on that, but you can't develop within it.
And I'm sure we're touching upon probably.
Um, Mr. Terry, where, where else have, have you developed subdivisions within the metroplex area?
Uh, we've been in, in this area for a long time and, uh, we have developed, uh, one development, uh, down the street. Uh, it showed up in one of the slides. It's on, on Eden Road and Golf Club Drive in Arlington. East of, of this track, not very far east of this track.
And, and if we vote to approve this, when would you anticipate, um, beginning construction of this project?
Of course, we'll have to do the engineering drawing and, uh, immediately start construction. So I would, uh, think that depending on how fast the plans can get, get approved, maybe, um, nine months or so.
Okay, so probably 2021 would be when houses are actually available for purchase.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Terry. Uh, I'm now gonna open this up, uh, to the, for the public hearing. Do we have anybody wanting to speak at the public hearing? I'm not seeing anybody with a hand raise or anything like that. So I will close the public hearing and staff response. I just want to make sure we're, we're clear that, um, we have, um, that a R2 lot is a minimum, right, of 15,000 square feet? And an R3 lot is a minimum of 8750?
Right.
And I live in an R3, so. And I think, uh, I think, um, Josh lives in the old R2, uh, system, yeah. Uh, vineyards or the modern R2.
I do have a question. If we're gonna go to questions.
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, was there any communication or any kind of neighborhoods with opposition for this development?
Um, I received a call from, uh, Representative Falconwood, who basically had questions. And he, he didn't indicate whether they would support it or not support it. He just asked a lot of questions about what was proposed at the site.
Okay.
Any other questions for Melissa?
I got one question. As far as roadways are concerned, um, I, and I know this isn't a site plan issue here, but are we expecting like this to be a U coming in, two points in and out, or is there gonna be a stub out for possible future expansions? Just trying to get an idea of how this is gonna work in the future.
Uh, can I answer this?
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, I envision a U-shaped, uh.
Okay, that's really all I, I had a question about.
Unfortunately, I didn't think there's anything to connect to, to the south. You know, it would go right through like an existing property. So there's not really a street.
Right. I just wasn't sure if there was any future ambition to go either direction with the development or, um, you know, or if we're gonna be expecting two really close roads together that are gonna stub out? Or is there gonna be one road and it's kind of like a P shape in the middle? Or, um, just trying to think of future problems that might exist, you know, turning a fire truck around if this is a one-way in, one-way out kind of thing.
Well, I, I think it's big enough that you actually have to have two entrances. Is that right, Melissa?
Yeah, I think, I think that is.
You can't have a cul-de-sac.
Right.
That's all I have.
Any other questions?
One more quick question, I'm sorry. Uh, like his other development, he mentioned down the road, it's gated. Is this community gonna be gated?
Um, at this point, we don't envision it to be gated. We envision it to be, uh, non-gated. Uh, one thing I did notice in the uniform development code for Canada is that the private streets are no longer allowed. Um, so we'd have to have private streets to have it gated. So that's one of the, uh, challenges. That, there's that Canada does not allow private streets as far as I know.
Uh, Melissa can answer that. I think that might be incorrect, right?
Yeah, I mean, uh, if the, if there's a homeowners association or some entity that's gonna maintain the streets, we do allow them. I don't think anybody, I'm not, I'm not sure that anybody is proposing that you gate the community. Um, but, you know, we do have some communities that have private streets as long as they're, uh, the development. You know, there's an HOA or some mechanism to maintain them privately.
Yes, Falconwood has private streets, but, uh, it seems like I read in the, uh, Canada that maybe it's not allowed, but that could be misconception on my part.
I, I think that the idea of gated communities runs against the idea of connectivity throughout the, the city. Uh, I think that's one of the reasons why the city doesn't do it anymore. Uh, and it sends a message if, I think, if you're going through your city and everybody's gated, uh, I don't know if that's the message you want to send out to the public. It makes it sound like we're.
Uh, Mr. Terry, what, what is your, uh, your targeted, uh, your price point, I guess, or your entry price before upgrades?
Uh, we imagine that the, uh, whole price of the homes would be, um, in the $375,000 range.
And, and the square footage approximately what?
Uh, 2,500, 3,000.
Okay.
Uh, square foot feet.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Josh? Sandra?
No.
Linda?
No, thank you.
Chad? Was that Chad? Is he barking?
Yeah. Ro, 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 George? No, no questions for me. All right.
Well, then I entertain a motion to approve case PZ 2002.
I'm making a motion to approve case PZ 02002 as presented.
And Chris, if I could ask you to, uh, include in your motion some type of language that would, uh, uh, authorize a new exhibit A, a correct exhibit A to be attached. to be attached to the ordinance showing the lot on the east side as well.
You want to change your motion there, Chris?
I will amend my motion to approve case P two zero zero two with the additional lot as presented during the developers' Q and A session.
I'll second that. Second?
Drew, does that meet the requirements?
It is. So based off that, we'll, we'll put a new Exhibit A on the back of the ordinance.
Leslie, you want to call?
Josh Altum?
Yeah.
Chris Pugh?
Yay.
Mayor Protim Lee?
Yay.
And Linda Rhodes?
Yay.
Chad Wondell?
Yay.
Mayor passes unanimously.
All right, from what I, what I, what I can tell is that yesterday we covered all the executive session items. So no need to go back, I don't think. So I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
A move we adjourn.
Josh? All right, all those in favor, raise your hand on your screen. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you all for being here.
Thank you, guys. Have a good night. Be safe.
You too.
Bye.